I'll call to order Limerick Schools Board of Education Regular Meeting Number 1521. And as I do that, Dr. Lake would like to make a brief statement.
Yeah, so, good evening, everybody. As you can tell, I'm not with the group this evening. This past weekend, I had the opportunity to see a family member that lives outside of our home. On Monday, that family member started to show signs of COVID-19. So, out of a, you know, to be abundance of caution, they've gotten a test. And so, until we get those test results back, I have self-quarantined myself today. And we should get those back tomorrow. So hopefully, we'll get good results and it'll be a negative test result. And I'll be back in the office sometime tomorrow. But that's why I'm not there this evening, but I am participating in the meeting virtually. So with that, Mike, I'm going to turn it back over to you.
All right, thank you, Dr. Lake. So, Dr. Lake, do we have any changes to the agenda?
We do not.
Okay, thanks.
Sorry, I muted myself.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Motion by Matt.
Second.
Second by Kathy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. So now, we'll do our Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand those who are able and... Sure, yeah. Come on up. Why don't you guys come on up here and face that way? Come on up here in the middle so everybody can see you, and then you can turn around and face that way. And if you want to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, go ahead.
Pledge of Allegiance to the land of the United States of America. Interelect, public, or which is same, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and just for all.
Thank you, guys. So briefly, I'll make a statement here in order to follow the St. Louis County Department of Public Health 2019, Novel Coronavirus Third amended Order for Business and Individual Guidelines for Social Distancing and Reopening. The number of patrons in attendance tonight will be limited. This meeting is also being livestreamed on the district's YouTube channel for those who cannot attend. And everyone who is in attendance this evening is wearing a face covering. So we'll move to 4.0, which is Special Recognitions. We have Crestwood Elementary tonight, and I think I'll turn it over to Sarah.
So I will actually turn it to Jerry to share about me this day. And we're a part of... I'm younger, but you see us. And first, let's go on the other side.
Okay.
Well, first of all, thank you so much for being here tonight. I am honored to join you and to share and honor some very special people. We're going to start this evening with Ethan Poprow. Ethan, if you could come forward, please. Is it okay if we take some... Ethan, how are you, sir?
Good.
Do you have your family here to see you this evening?
I do.
I'll thank all of you for being here this evening. Ethan, we are honoring and recognizing you this evening for being willing to stand up for what is right, even when others are not, for being anyone's friend. Ethan, you see the best in other people, and we acknowledge that. You are helpful around our school. You're on our recycling team. You help water the plants around the school as needed as well. You're very helpful to anyone that needs it. You're a leader in the classroom who models respect, empathy, and kindness. You always give 100% effort, and you are humble, and you are very kind. You handle conflict well, and you assist others, Ethan, in making the right choices. We are honoring and recognizing you this evening for having exemplary character, being an incredible friend to all, displaying incredible effort, and for being a leader at Crestwood Elementary. Our school, Ethan, is a better place because of you. Thank you, sir. Thank you. We think we have a special gift. You get this fabulous flyers shirt. So that is yours, sir, as well as recognition for doing, for having such great skills and being ready to tackle the world. So thank you, sir. I would say your band, but COVID. We're going to do a picture power at the end. Okay. Ethan socially distanced in a picture. How about that? We are so proud of you. How do you want to... Is that all right? Is that good?
That's fine.
Okay.
Ready, everybody? One, two, three.
Can't you see how big our smiles are behind the mask? Right, Ethan, well done, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ethan. And next, we would like to acknowledge and recognize Mia Buttrich. Mia, can you come up, please? How are you tonight? Oh, it is so good to see you. Mia, we are acknowledging you this evening because you always keep a smile on your face. Even with the mask on, you can tell that you're smiling. You are always positive. You do the right thing even when it's hard. You persevere through difficult situations, and you always give 100% of your effort. You are a leader in our school who is patient, who is kind, even with classmates who need more help than others. You never try to bring attention to yourself. You, Mia, are very humble. You celebrate the success of others. You treat other students and staff members with respect and kindness. You are caring, and your teachers tell me that you're very, very pleasurable to have in class. We honor and recognize you this evening, Mia, for having exemplary character, for being an incredible friend to all, for displaying incredible effort, and for being a leader at Crestwood Elementary. Mia, our school is a better place because of you. Thank you. There you go. So again, that actually is my favorite word to describe you. Perseverance. Do you know what that is? I mean, you keep going, and you keep trying, and you keep working hard. So that is awesome. Thank you. Great job. Let's get a picture.
Ready? One, two, three.
To Ethan's family and to Mia's family, we also want to honor and recognize you. We know that it takes all of us for these children to be so outstanding and amazing. If you could stand, we'd like to give you a round of applause as well. So now, I would like to recognize our staff person... Let's make sure I say this right. Staff Support Person of the Year, Mrs. Mary Corr. Mrs. Corr, you provide students support and interventions that help promote their academic successes within our school. You are a member of our Diversity Committee, and you are passionate about equity within our school and the service that we provide for our students and families. You are always willing to go above and beyond to support our school. You volunteer your time to complete projects and make our school a more inclusive place and a better environment for our staff and our students. You are organized, you are efficient, you are positive. Mary, you are brilliant, and you are kind. Not just an ally in our equity work, Mary, you are a co-conspirator. You are dedicated, you are dependable, and you are collaborative. We honor you tonight for being a co-conspirator within our school, for always being willing to go above and beyond, and for challenging us to do better because we know better. Crestwood Elementary is a better place because of you. We honor you tonight, Mrs. Corr. To be able to purchase whatever Lindbergh gear will represent all of the awesome things you're doing at Crestwood. Thank you so much. All right, let's get a picture. And last, but certainly not least, a man I'm pretty sure that we're all familiar with, Mr. DC, our State Missouri State Teacher of the Year. Mr. DC, sir, you are the Missouri State Teacher of the Year. Not only are you the Crestwood Teacher of the Year, sir, but you are also the Missouri State Teacher of the Year. DC, there have been many interviews already that have been had. There have been many people that have already shared amazing things about you. But I just want to share with you in the small time that I've known you and I've observed. Sir, you are very genuine. You are always willing to go above and beyond. You are dedicated. There is not one task at Crestwood Elementary that you are not willing to do that helps provide support to our kids. You're passionate. You're passionate about building relationships. You're passionate about community. Everything you do, DC, you do it well. You do it with excellence. You empower our students to be better. You develop and establish trusting, respectful, and caring relationships with all students and their families. You attend student events outside of the school day to show students that we care about them. You encourage our students to persevere in the face of adversity and, above all course, to have fun in doing so. You're very positive. And sir, your ego should fill this room. It really does not. You are humble. You are always, always humble in any interaction that we have ever had with you. You use the gifts and talents that we have to make this world and Crestwood Elementary a better place. We honor you tonight for your passion, your dedication, your love for students and our school. DC, Crestwood Elementary is a better place because of you. Thank you.
Can I get one more there?
Yeah, absolutely.
And Mia?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll move now to 5.0, 5.02. We have one consent resolution. That's the American Education Week Resolution, which is November 16th through the 20th. We don't read those aloud, but we do need a motion to approve that resolution.
So moved.
So moved by Karen, second. Second Jen. So we'll vote now on that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes 7-0. Citizen 6.0 is citizen comments regarding agenda items. We do not have anybody signed up for that. We do have two speakers for non-agenda items, which will occur later in tonight's meeting. So that takes us to 7.0 communications. The 7.01 calendar of events. Mr. Secretary, can you review those for us?
Sure thing. So this week, middle school and high school parent teacher conferences are happening. Also, on the 19th, it's the end of first quarter. So there will be no school that day. Additionally, there will be various board advisory meetings, committee meetings during the week of the 19th. And then in November, we do not have school on November 2nd or November 3rd. And then November 10th is our next board meeting.
Okay, so we'll move now to 5.0, 5.02. We have one consent resolution. That's the American Education Week Resolution, which is November 16th through the 20th. We don't read those aloud, but we do need a motion to approve that resolution.
So moved.
So moved by Karen, second. Second Jen. So we'll vote now on that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes 7-0. Citizen 6.0 is citizen comments regarding agenda items. We do not have anybody signed up for that. We do have two speakers for non-agenda items, which will occur later in tonight's meeting. So that takes us to 7.0 communications. The 7.01 calendar of events. Mr. Secretary, can you review those for us?
Sure thing. So this week, middle school and high school parent teacher conferences are happening. Also, on the 19th, it's the end of first quarter. So there will be no school that day. Additionally, there will be various board advisory meetings, committee meetings during the week of the 19th. And then in November, we do not have school on November 2nd or November 3rd. And then November 10th is our next board meeting.
Okay, thank you for that. 7.02 is report of meetings. So this is the time where board members take an opportunity to report on any state or local meetings, MSBA meetings, or other community meetings that they've been involved with, whether in person or virtual. So would anybody like to kick that off?
Sure, I will.
Thanks.
There, we attended, some of us, including me, the virtual Missouri School Board Association meeting, wish that we were in person. But it was a great sessions that they offered, a lot of COVID-related sessions, which was great because we're one of the leading school districts when it comes to that and having kids in the buildings, which is wonderful. And then got to hear DC, who we just recognized, speak also for the Missouri State Teacher of the Year. So it was great. Thanks.
I should probably say I'm here. So real quick, I'll go back over that for everyone's benefit. On October 23rd, we will have a Lindbergh Schools elected official Zoom call. Normally, this is an in-person breakfast, but you know, due to COVID restrictions, we're doing it over Zoom. And this is where our local officials, administration, and board members gather to discuss topics that affect schools and get to know each other a little bit better. So hopefully next year, we can resume our annual in-person breakfast. 7.04 is the review of the upcoming Board of Education meeting agendas. Again, Mr. Secretary.
Yes, like I said earlier, our next meeting will be on November 10th. We will be announcing the candidate filing dates for the next year's school board election. We'll also hear a first reading of the 21, 22 school year calendar. And then all the usual business reports will be in that meeting as well.
Okay, thank you very much. 7.05, we have no appointments. 7.06 is the MSBA report, which we are not showing tonight, but we invite you to click on a link, which is on Board Docs, if you'd like to view the this month's MSBA report on the website. So we'll go to 8.0, which is special reports. And 8.01 is our board advisory committee updates. So I guess we'll start with Joelle. But so these in finance.
Finance committee meeting needs the Thursday prior to each board meeting and goes over the financial information as well as items in regards to grants, change orders for the prop, budget amendments, and then anything really that has to do with finances. So in this packet, you'll have an item coming up about an RFP that we discussed back after the meeting as well. We also have just general conversation about what's going on in school finance right now because it is a unique time. So that meeting went well.
All right, thank you. Brian, human resources?
Our human resources committee met, and we talked about metrics, data, COVID-19 metrics, and gating criteria, updated the committee on that information. We also reviewed the monthly personnel report as we do each month, and we're scheduled to meet again next month.
Okay, and Sarah, teaching and learning, technology, and student life.
So for teaching and learning and student life, it was the first meeting of the year. And we have almost half of, actually a little bit more than half of the board advisories are new members this year. So we started each of those meetings kind of with an understanding of where we've been and what the work has been that we have done over the course of the last couple of years. So for teaching and learning, we looked at some of the information about curriculum cycles, just ensuring everyone on the advisory had a baseline understanding of that, looked at where we were in terms of task forces and the work that's been happening there, and then broke into smaller groups to then have conversations about what's the focus we want to have for this school year. Overwhelmingly, the focus is, you know, continuing our work with grading practices, feedback, priority standards, and how that really translates to learning for students. So we're going to continue down that path over the course of the year. For student life, very similarly, we reviewed what student life has done over the last couple of years, developing Lindbergh life model, also looking at the work we did around mental wellness, activities and athletics, and bullying prevention last year. And then dove into what do we want to do from here? The group really spoke strongly about the need to work on the student experience side of equity. So while we have the Standing Committee for Equity and Diversity, the board advisory is going to, at this upcoming meeting, hear about the work that's been happening on our Equity and Diversity Committee, and then start to identify where are the potential areas that they can have a role within that work as well. And then our Technology Board Advisory, it was actually the second time that we met this year. So everyone had already been familiar with one another and the work that had been done in the past. And we had identified previously that there were three areas we wanted to focus on this year. Infrastructure work, professional learning around technology, and then also family support. So this first meeting really focused on infrastructure. And so we got everyone aligned to what had previously been areas of concern for infrastructure based on our assessment of technology services or our technology audit, and identified where we had been a year ago and what had been implemented since then. And then also started to develop protocols around technology outages for this school year. In fact, we had to use one of those protocols this last week. If you remember getting the email that said, and the text that said, "Internet is out," and it was the first day of middle school coming back online. So it was like, of course, internet is out. And we only have until 7:40 for school to be ready to go. But fortunately, we were able to resolve that before school started. So that was the work that we did. And then I think what's really important is the feedback that we get, how we use that. So in our Technology Board Advisory, there was a lot of conversation about making sure there was clarity of how to access support for families. So as a result, we were able to put some things in e-note, some graphics that the communications department did to ensure that everybody knows how do they access those resources and those supports, and specifically the copilot website that allows for our help desk ticketing system. And that's run by students, which is amazing. And they work in conjunction with our technology department, so they're not out there on their own. But the student-led element of that is definitely worth highlighting and celebrating.
Okay. Go ahead.
I'm just going to make a quick mention that our Facility Advisory Committee met since the last time.
Bear with us a little.
Sorry, all right. We had that meeting before, though. Our Facility Advisory Committee met, we hadn't met the first time. Last time we met prior to meeting recently was in April. So really, that group talks about all the projects that are going on the district and helps us plan for the next summer. So again, like I said, we met, last time we met in April, then we met recently, and we talked about all the things that we got done this summer, which was a lot, the Prop R and our energy management, and just the ongoing maintenance that happens in the summer. So go ahead and report.
Great, thank you. So we'll move to 9.0, which is action items by consent. Oh, I'm sorry, I almost skipped you. Brian, the enrollment update, 8.02. Yeah, sorry. Trying to take a little off your table there, but.
I appreciate the effort. So a little bit of a different enrollment report this year, as you might expect. Our district enrollment stands at 7,081 students. And for the first time in a long time, this is a decrease in enrollment. We've done some research. Anytime someone withdraws from our district, we ask them to give a reason. And COVID-19-related issues were a reason this year that we put in that dropdown menu. And so the cohort analysis that I shared with the board in the Friday packet shows where those withdrawals happen. They're largely at the elementary level. We had 35 fewer kindergarten students enroll this year, and then we did have withdrawals. That research has shown us that while we decreased 62 students, we had 126 people withdraw citing COVID-19-related issues. And so the net loss with new enrollments ended up being 62. So if you took, if you were to take the 126 COVID-related withdrawals completely out of the equation, we still would have grown this year close to projections. And so that's clearly the variable and the difference maker was the COVID-19 reasons. And so it's good that we're able to track that. And we do anticipate once things are back to normal. We'll continue on our normal growth pattern as we've got projections from our demographer for the next 10 years of pretty solid growth here at Lindbergh.
All right, thank you, Brian. So now we'll move to 9.0, which is action items by consent. Under this, we have items 9.01 to 9.15. Having reviewed those, would anyone like to remove any of those items for individual consideration? Okay, hearing none, may I have a motion to approve act? Oh, Mike, I'm sorry.
Sorry about that. Yeah, so I just wanted to announce, I was going to go ahead and recuse myself from voting on the action items tonight by consent, simply because, you know, our board policies provide that, you know, any perspective, even conflict of interest should be taken into consideration. So I'm doing that now, given certain contracted work I'm involved with.
Thanks, Mike. So can I have a motion to approve items 9.01 through 9.15 as presented by consent? So moved by Kathy, second.
Second.
Second, Kristi. Any further discussion or questions regarding these items? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Okay, so it passes 6-0. Okay, we, 10.0, we do have one individual action item, which is the Proposition R, LHS bid package, three storm shelter, regarding this storm shelter and dam, and Joelle?
I have in your packet the details behind what is our last bid for a while on the Prop R project at the high school. Gives you the information of when the bid was let and the respondent to the project that is the storm shelter and gym on the property. We were a little bit, as I mentioned earlier in our workshop, we were slightly above what we budgeted. But as with every project that we've approved with Prop R so far, once we have a contractor in place, we sit down and go over it again, detail, and make sure that we're getting the biggest bang for our buck. So I would request that the board approve this, and then we can move forward with contract negotiations and hopefully some cost savings.
Okay, thank you. So we did have a motion to approve by Karen and second by Matt. Any further questions or comments for Joelle regarding this item? Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, that passes 7-0. So then we'll move to 11.0, which is reports. Under 11.03, we do have a first reading for a review of board policies. I believe we have three in there this month. So this will be your first reading. And if you have any questions, I believe direct those to Brian regarding these policies. Okay, 12.0, which is citizen comments regarding non-agenda items. We do have a couple of speakers signed up under non-agenda items. And so when you guys come forward, if you could just state your name and your address and the item that you're speaking on, and just, we ask that you keep it to about three minutes if possible. And just know that the board does not make comments during the meeting, and we will respond to you in writing at a later time. And are you guys speaking together? Okay, so it's, is it Felia or Felicia? Felia, okay, sorry. And Meredith. If you guys could come forward and.
I think we should stand facing them because they won't be able to hear it.
You need to stand in front of it.
This is advanced. Oh, my name and my address. So Felia Davenport, address 10941 Vargas Drive, St. Louis, Missouri, 63123.
Mary Core, 1311 Samoa Drive, St. Louis, Missouri, 63126.
Meredith Labaty, 6226 Northwood Avenue, Apartment 2W, St. Louis, Missouri, 63105. I'm going to go ahead and start. Thank you, Lindbergh School Board. We wanted to speak tonight on behalf of the Lindbergh Equity and Diversity Coalition, which is known as LEED. We wanted to speak on the topic of equity and diversity, which is very important to Lindbergh staff members, Lindbergh students, and Lindbergh families. We are encouraged to learn of the steps that the district has been taking of late to make, to address equity and diversity issues, namely dedicating a full-time position to equity work during the 2021, 2022 school year next year. This year, assigning building reps focused on equity to each building, and the continued partnership with educational equity consultants, which speaks to the district's commitment to equity. Despite the departure of Dr. Jana Parker, it was encouraging to see that an extra duty, extra pay position was devoted to equity and diversity for this current school year. Most importantly, we are confident that the district's plan to add a full-time equity and diversity position for next school year can lead to significant progress in this area. We also want to comment on some of the other positive steps the district is taking, such as looking at incorporating teaching tolerances, social justice standards into our school buildings, responding to requests for more transparency with the district by adding equity work to the Lindbergh Schools website, and dedicating two sessions of the speaker series to this topic.
Also, while these steps matter, we are looking forward to seeing greater growth in the coming year because we must continue pushing forward in the work despite any discomfort. Austin Channing Brown writes in her memoir, "I'm Still Here: Black Dignity in a World Made for Whiteness." Racism never went away. It just evolved. I feel no need to pat America on its back for these achievements. This is how it always should have been. Many call it progress, but I do not consider it. Praise worthy that only within the last generation did America reach the baseline for human decency. I hope there is progress I can sincerely applaud on the horizon. We look forward to working with all of you and pushing each other to do better and get it right. Sincerely, the LEED Coalition.
Thank you. Thank you.
Terminately muting? I'm not muting myself. Yeah. So 13.0, call for executive session. So based on our authority to do so under the provisions of Missouri by statutes, may I have a motion to call for executive session on November 10th?
So moved.
So moved by Jen, second by Mike T. So this is a roll call vote. So Mike Chamet, yes. Karen Schuster?
Yes.
Matt Alonso?
Yes.
Kristi Watts?
Yes.
Kathy Karla Lorenz?
Yes.
Jennifer Miller?
Yes.
And Mike Tishus?
Yes.
All right. Motion passes 7-0. So 14.0 is recess. We've already conducted our executive session, so there's no need to call for a recess. So we can move to 16.0, which is adjournment. May I have a motion to adjourn regular meeting number 1520? So moved by Kristi, second quickly by Kathy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes 7-0. So Lindbergh School Board of Education, meeting 1521, is adjourned. Thank you, guys.